Welcome to the June tenth, two thousand and fifteen Planning Commission. And, uh...
Roca.
I was looking at the wrong thing.
I'll help you out.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
And Commissioner Piliano did inform us she would be absent today. Aguilar, absent.
Oh, okay, that's that. My left wing is gone, huh? Okay, let's stand for the pledges.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to item two, public comment. Oh, we have, uh, one of my left-wing people, Aguilar, come in. So, you can mark him present now.
Yes.
Uh, I wrote to, uh, item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Does anybody wish to make any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Number three, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
They move to second, Roca, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, partial map, public hearing. The action on all the, uh, partial maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be approved for a separate here, uh, public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In, uh, in any case, there will be a separate vote for each of the items. Do we have anybody wishing to remove any of the items? Any member of the Planning Commission wish to recuse themselves? Okay, so let's go with, uh, four A. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, would anybody in the public wish to make any public comments on any of these items? Any of these two items? Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment and we're gonna go for, uh, vote for four A. This is tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero one five. And, uh, I could entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve a categorical exemption that's consistent with CEQA and, uh, conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM fifteen dash zero one five and the waiver of the final map.
I'll second that motion.
Move to second, Roca, please.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item four B. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state CEQA guideline pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three pertaining to limited number of new small facility or structure and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero one three, uh, with the requirement of a final map.
Make the motion to conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM one five zero one three with the requirement of a final map.
I'll second.
Uh, Roca, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, both items four A and B have been approved. Okay, let's go on to, uh, item five, public hearing. This is a special use permit number PSP fifteen zero one one, Kennedy Meadows General Store in care of Allen's Ha- Hansen. Uh, this is a categorical exemption and special use permit to allow a campground on a point seven five acre portion of a four point seven six acre site comprised of two parcels in the commercial recreation zone. The site is located in north side of Beach Meadow Roads, uh, Sherman Pass Road, approximately three hundred feet west of Kennedy Meadow Road in Kennedy Meadow. And Dana, yeah, I guess you're my, our contact here.
Uh, good morning, Chairman Gong.
Good morning.
Missioners. As mentioned, uh, this is to allow a campground on the Kennedy Meadows General Store property in Kennedy Meadows. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Title fourteen, Section one five three zero three, Class three, and this project is compatible with this exemption because the tents and portable restrooms, which will be pertinent to the existing market, are seasonal and will be utilized on a temporary basis. Entitlement is found in Section sixteen of Ordinance three fifty-two, which allows campgrounds in the, uh, commercial recreation zone upon approval of a special use permit. And the project is located in the Kennedy Meadows Subarea Mountain Plan, land use element of the Tulare County General Plan, and the land use designation is Mountain Commercial Opportunity Area. The site is one of three mountain commercial nodes in Kennedy Meadows, and the project was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County General Plan policies. Project is located on the north side of Beach Meadow Road, which is Sherman Pass Road, approximately three hundred feet west of Kennedy Meadows Road in Kennedy Meadows. And the project is located on two parcels in the CO zone, and the site contains the Kennedy Meadows General Store. Uh, the proposal is to set aside approximately three quarters of an acre of the four point seven six acre site in order to allow hikers along the Pacific Crest Trail to stop and rest and pitch their tent and camp on the property. This property is the site of the Kennedy Meadows General Store, and the camping area would be located on the rear portion of the general store property. Uh, this is the location where hikers can pick up their mail and other supplies before continuing along their journey, and tent camping only will be allowed, which makes this a low-impact activity, and the project will not result in any, uh, additional permanent structures or increased traffic.
Dana, how far is the trail from there?
Pardon me?
Where is this, the trail?
The trail is approximately one-half mile west of this location. Don't have a... All of you.
Okay.
This is the site plan. The store is open seven days a week, uh, seasonally, nine to five, and typically generally the months are May through October. Two employees work at the store, one shift. Uh, the campground would be available twenty-four hours a day throughout the duration of the hiking season, which is generally May through August. Water is provided by an onsite domestic well. Uh, liquid waste is provided by a porta potty with a hand wash station, which will be pumped twice a week as necessary, and it will be maintained by the Ridge Crest Septic, uh, company and will be removed from the premises when not in use during the winter months. And staff did receive one inquiry from an adjacent property owner who expressed concern about the campers trespassing onto his property. So this condition number twelve has been added to the resolution as a response to his concern, and the condition is the applicant shall post no trespassing signs every fifty feet along the west property line of APN three one oh two one two zero five. And if campers, hikers, or guests disregard this notice, then the applicant shall erect a fence along the entire distance of the west property line of that APN. So the applicant and the, uh, adjacent property owner were both satisfied with the addition of this condition. This project was noticed according to the law, and staff is recommending that, uh, the commission approve a categorical exemption from CEQA and conditionally approve special use permit PSP fifteen dash zero one one. And that concludes staff's report.
Dana, could you put the, the map up there and show me where the fence line would, uh, run if, in fact, it required, uh...
I think it's on page twenty-three.
Can't see it there.
I can... Hey, how, the fence line would run from the southwest junction of where the two parcels on the site meet. I, I can't, I can't get this to there. Right there it is.
I'm looking at, is it on this somewhere? Here, I'm looking here, and I can't see where it says fence on it.
I thought it was the dotted line.
From here up to here. That would be the no trespassing signs along the entire length of this.
Well, that dotted line goes across the north part and down the east part, too, and across the bottom of it, too. So I'm a little confused.
Well, the property owner who called was this property owner right here.
Okay.
And I thought personally that it would be...
Down there, okay.
Not really adequate to only post the signs along this parcel, so I continued it down to there.
Okay, that, that, that's it for me. I just couldn't, I didn't see it on any of the, um, exhibits here that I had. I was just curious.
Well, it was on the added...
Pardon?
You were right. I, I missed the term, the dotted line is a fence. Not that. Longer than the dotted line.
Uh, for, for the commission, this condition was added after, uh, this was added after this, uh, was put together, so this is more of a recent occurrence.
That's why it wasn't on the exhibit.
That's why it's not an exhibit in there.
Okay, that's fine. That's, well, that's why I asked the question where it was, 'cause I wanted to know. Thank you, Dana.
Sure.
Hey, any comments from the board here?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that, number one, this is, I know we've been going back and forth with some possible uses out in Kennedy Meadows. This is a very compatible one. The kind of people and campers that come here, this isn't some campground where transients hang out and they're gonna be standing there overstaying their welcome and limit. These are mainly through hiker people with goals. They're, what we call in the people of us who hike, it's, they're more the elite kind of hikers, and this whole thing is critical to have a place where they can pick up mail and extra supplies that they can't really carry, you know, throughout the whole trip, because this trail, as you may know, goes all the way from Mexico to, to, uh, Canada. And so you have to, number one, make a real commitment to do this trail, and if you've seen the movie Wild, you got a taste of it, because that's on the same trail. In fact, they went through Kennedy Meadows in the movie, well, at, at least an area that was supposed to be Kennedy Meadows, and it's a really good use in the area where that's located. And I don't think you'll have a problem with the trespassing, although there are some people that could potentially come in at night. But basically, if the campsites are well-marked, that's where they'll go, and I think you'll have, um, I don't think you'll ever get a complaint, but it's, I suppose it's possible. But, uh, like I said, I think it's a very compatible use of this.
Are there any bathing facilities, like, uh...
No.
There's probably a hose they can rinse off with.
That's probably why I don't do it. Or Motel Six or anything.
Baby wipes.
Hair abatement.
Okay, well, I'm gonna open the, uh, public comment section to the invisible public.
The applicants did notify us that they would not be able to appear today.
Uh, so I'm gonna close, seeing none, seeing no public, I'm gonna close the public comment and, and, uh, put this out for a motion.
I'm ready to make that motion that we approve the special use permit for, um, this Kennedy Meadows. Let me see, do I got the number here in front of me? Yeah, categorical exemption and special use permit to allow a campground on a point seven five acre portion of the four point seven six site comprised of two parcels in the commercial rec zone in Kennedy Meadows.
With the additional...
With the additional condition of offense if, uh, so needed.
Second motion.
Roca, please.
Can we, uh, back up for one second with the condition of a trespass sign, it's not a...
Yeah, I think that's important, too.
Okay, with the trespassing sign, uh, Roca, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, motion has been passed. Move on to five B. Uh, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, amends, uh, amendment to the Tulare County Zoning Ordinance number three five two for, uh, one, an emergency shelter, two, a transitional housing definition, three, family definition, four, reasonable accommodation, and a, five, second unit, six, dens- density bonus ordinance, and, uh, item seven, small residential rooftop solar ordinance. Uh, Chuck, it's all yours.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Chuck Prisabowski, Economic Development and Planning Division. Uh, as mentioned today, I have several zoning ordinance amendments that are before you. Basically, these zoning ordinance amendments are required by state law. Some of them go back as far as two thousand and two, uh, that the county just hasn't, uh, adopted the ordinance at that time. Uh, these ordinance are also, the staff is working on the housing element right now, and, uh, for a expedited review for the Housing and Community Development Division of the state, uh, these ordinances will be required for their review of the housing element. So this is kind of a, a tag team, uh, from HCD and, uh, state legislator of the, how we, uh, adopt these ordinance. So as I mentioned, this is required by state ordinance. I'll go over each one, uh, as we go through. The seven ordinance amendments, uh, some of them are very simple, uh, they're just definitions in the zoning ordinance, and then some of them are more complex, like the density bonus ordinance, but we have transitional housing or, uh, definition, family definition, second unit ordinance, amendment, reasonable accommodation procedures, the emergency shelter procedures, density bonus ordinance, and the small residential rooftop solar. I have each slide for each one of these. So the first one is the transitional housing. Uh, special needs groups, uh, need housing for, uh, six months. Uh, this essentially adds the definition to Section two. It also adds the definition as an allowed use in all the residential zones. Uh, this is from SP seven forty-five and Government Code sixty-five five eighty-two. Uh, anyways, amendment adds the definition. So the second one is the family definition. Uh, this also goes into Section two, which is definitions. Uh, this goes in the fair housing law, uh, California Regulations twenty-four five point four oh three. Uh, definition of a family is anybody, uh, one or more persons that use a kitchen, and that's exactly what's being added into the ordinance as the definition. Second one moving on is the second unit ordinance. Uh, the county adopted a second unit ordinance back in two thousand and six. The only thing that this ordinance amendment does is add, uh, ministerial instead of administrative permit, uh, 'cause that's what the state law required. That is, this is a ministerial permit, not a, um, administrative use. Now, the second unit ordinance essentially allows granny u- granny units, uh, along with an, a main house, and that's what it's used for.
So that, that, that's almost by right, then, huh?
That's correct. It would be by right. Uh, back in two thousand and six, they wanted a many, administrative use permit to kind of keep control of the granny units, but that's not exactly what it says in, in the law, so we have to change it to ministerially. Uh, moving on, uh, reasonable accommodation. Now, this is just procedures of how we accept an application and move through an application process for somebody that, uh, for an, uh, American Disability Act person, uh, how we would accommodate their request. A lot of the requests are either for a, a setback variance, uh, for the wheelchair ramp, or, uh, parking structures, or something to that nature that deals with the, uh, the bill, either a building permit, the general plan, uh, permit, or zoning permit as such like that. We actually have, uh, easier procedures right now within the county. They're called the minor variance, and they're all on the minor deviation, which is an AA permit. Uh, that would be used before we get to this part of the ordinance. This part of the ordinance would actually go back to the Planning Commission for more complex projects, uh, for a decision from you. So the, uh, if somebody from reasonable accommodation would be able to go through any of those routes, uh, to be, uh, to, uh, either get an okay from their request. Emergency shelters. This ordinance allows emergency shelters, which could be homeless shelters, uh, um, domestic violence shelters, any of that nature, it's just not emergencies per se. Uh, and we, the county, uh, elected to, um, allow these within the M-one zone. Why we selected the M-one zone? Because there's a large amount of vacant property out in the county in all the, uh, communities of M-one zone. The M-one zone is usually located near transportation and commercial services. Uh, there's twenty-three hundred acres countywide of the M-one zone, and because of the way the M-one zone, uh, policies and procedures are, it limits dust, odors, smoke, et cetera. So, uh, using all these, we selected the M-one zone as opposed to a residential zone, uh, for these type of services.
So they will, they will have to go in an M-one, or they can go in as well as residential?
Uh, this is only for the M-one zone, so we're not requesting, uh, the emergency shelters go into any residential zones, so only the M-one.
Well, they've been going into residential up to this point, have they not?
Have, excuse me?
Would they, they're in residential now, are they not?
Uh, I do not believe, I don't think the county zoning ordinance even has a definition of emergency shelters.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of in the city. Uh, I know in the city of Icelia, they have them in, in residential areas.
See, the way the use is, 'cause people, uh, persons would actually live there, that it's not necessarily like a bomb shelter, but there's gonna be, uh, domestic violence persons, people living there all the time. That's another reason why we don't, wouldn't have them in the residential zones, but the M-one, anyways. Density bonus ordinance. Essentially, uh, ordinance, uh, this will go into Section fifteen point seven, uh, Government Code sixty-five nine fifteen, uh, state law requires a density bonus, um, for all the resi- this will be on all the residential zones. Going over it, it's a variable, uh, uh, bonus based on the percentage of low-income housing. So if you say you're building a hundred, uh, units, uh, and you would like a density bonus or the concession, you would, uh, if you'd, ten percent of those units would have to be low-income, and you get a twenty percent bonus. The more low-income pers- households you have, the higher the bonus would go, up to thirty-five percent. So essentially, you'd get a hundred and twenty units and you'd have to, uh, and you'd have to have, uh, ten of those at low income. They'd have to be deed restricted for thirty years. Uh, the density bonus, uh, is not a discretionary decision. This is another ministerial decision that we have to comply with. This will be in residential zones only, and the incentives are based on, uh, a percentage of the low income to a maximum of three. So if you just get the ten percent low income, we would give you one concession. The concessions are on page fifty of your staff report, but essentially they're parking, uh, zoning setbacks, height limitations of those natures, and the county would actually have the decision whether to accept those concessions, and they have to be, uh, essentially a part of the, they're necessary to complete the project. So if, if somebody asks for a parking concession, and it wasn't really a requirement of the project to make it succeed, then we can actually say no to that particular, uh, project. One of the, uh, we do have a, uh, project right now that is requesting a density bonus ordinance concession, uh, self-help enterprises in Goshen. Now, they don't necessarily want the density bonus to add additional units, however, they do want a parking concession, uh, to make their parking, uh, less than the normal regulated by the zoning ordinance. Continuing on, the solar ordinance, uh, section, this will be in Section fifteen point eight, Government Code sixty-five eight fifty point five. Essentially, it requires our building division to come up with a checklist. Upon an applicant completing that checklist completely, uh, and accurately, then we would permit rooftop solar ordinances on residential units over the counter the same day, and that's what the ordinance requires. Going over that, these are exemptions for the, uh, California Environmental Quality Act. The second unit ordinance is a statutory exemption. Uh, I use the general rule exemption for the rest of the remainder, as there's no particular project that we're constructing here. These are just ordinance amendments. And with that, this will be one motion, uh, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, as this is zoning ordinance amendments, that, uh, we approve the statutory exemption for the second unit ordinance, we approve the, uh, general rule exemption, and we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they approve the amendments to the Tulare County's Old Ordinance number three fifty-two for transitional housing definition, family definition, second units, reasonable accommodation, emergency shelters, density bonus, and small residential rooftop solar. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair, everyone.
Any questions?
Yeah, Chuck, back, back to the density bonus ordinance, uh, the example you used in Goshen there for the self-help. What's the, what's the reasoning for, uh, allowing, what, fewer parking places, basically? Is that what it is? Or, or, or smaller parking?
If I may, Commissioner, um, basically, they do have, uh, quite a large multifamily component to that project, and our off-site parking requirements, uh, could create a condition where they're, they're overparked. Um, and plus, they have a single-family residential component to that, so to make sure they're not putting so many cars on the streets in the residential subdivision, it would be, uh, beneficial to the project not to have such a high amount of off-site parking, or onsite parking for that matter, 'cause, you know, if you limit it to, to one car, um, it tends to work in a lot of these multifamily affordable housing, uh, subdivisions. So the, the, the suggestion is really just, uh, to make it the project function, as we stated earlier. If it does not make the project function, then it would not be, uh, allowed.
Self-help does such a good job that I can't imagine that whatever they're doing would, uh, would cause the project not to look, you go to any of their projects and they're just, uh, they're nice, they always stay nice, so.
Well, absolutely, and, uh, you know, a lot of these, uh, multifamily, um, subdivisions, you'll see, uh, vacant car, uh, spaces, and it's, uh, a, a waste of, of resources, and we just wanna make sure that, uh, they gain all the benefits they can for building, uh, affordable housing.
You have to ask about the, uh, emergency shelters, uh, since no one knows, except the police, where the battered women's shelters are. Are there any of these battered wi- women's shelters would be affected in the, in that change, or is, that's just left alone?
I, I have no idea, to tell you the truth, on that question. I don't know, um, anything right now allowed would be grandfathered in. Uh, there's also some, now, this, this isn't necessarily the, uh, the battered women's shelters, there might be some other uses allowed in our other, uh, like, transitional housing, uh, that...
Could work.
...definition could work for that particular thing. We'll usually make it somehow to fit those in, but for the emergency shelters, for the state law, for HCD, this was the, uh, this is our decision to where we, where they should go. We could put them into other ones if you would like us to...
I just, uh, would wish you would call Family Services and tell them what you're doing in the county, and then to make sure that none of their, uh, facilities are affected.
Sure, we can do that.
Is that reasonable, yes?
Okay, any other questions up here? Uh, I'm gonna, at this time, open to the, uh, to the public. David, do you wanna speak on behalf of all the empty people that's not here?
Yeah.
All right.
All the people, I mean, just the seats.
Well, literally not seeing anybody, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, uh, comment section, and, uh, open for a, a recommendation to the board, or a, a motion to recommend to the board.
I'll make the motion that we approve, recommend to the Board of Supervisors, uh, statutory exemption pursuant to this, Division thirteen, Section two one zero eight zero dot one seven, second unit, uh, unit ordinance and a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Title fourteen, California Code Regulations, Section one five oh six one subsection C, general rule exemption. Recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve amendments to the Tulare County zoning ordinance number three five two as listed above.
I'll second.
Uh, move in a second, Roca, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, recommendation has been approved. We move on to item six, director's report.
Commissioner, I am Aaron Bach, chief planner, Tulare County RMA. In Mike Washam's absence today, I just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, we have tentatively scheduled to move forward on Terabell and Dukor to coincide with the housing element. So we would bring, hopefully, those community plans to this commission in the July timeframe. So we're moving pretty fast and furious, maybe, maybe as late as August. But we definitely want to get to the board by September for the housing element. So you will have a series of housing element, community plans before you. And early March is also on our agenda for December. But we will not have to go through what we did last time again. So we appreciate all your effort and patience in going through that process. It's really helpful. And we're scheduled for the board on Tuesday for all of those, Darrells and the three community plans. So we do appreciate it. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Hector or Mike if you have any comments.
Mike Bond, Public Works. I, this, this is the time of the year where the board awards or provides a number of service awards to employees and assistant director of Public Works. It's kind of a privilege to go to all the yards that Public Works has. I just thought I'd just touch on that because these are some of the hardest working people that the county has. They do an amazing job with the resources that they have. County has over three thousand and some thirty-three miles of maintained highway that we're responsible for. So this week, we kind of go to each of the yards and I just thought I'd mention them. We have a central yard that we have a heavy equipment operation out there, but that is also where our yard number two is housed. There, that handles virtually all of the southwest portion of the county. And in De Nuba, we have yard number four. In Porterville, that's our yard number one, or number one. And then in Terabell, there's yard number five. And there were nine employees in Public Works that received awards. One had a twenty-five year award, one had a thirty-five year award. So a great bunch of people, really hardworking. If we talk about the team-based approach that's been implemented in Public Works and a lot of collaboration, those guys invented that a long time ago. So I just thought I'd express some appreciation and make you aware of, you know, our efforts going on out in the field there.
Thank you. Any other director's report? Okay, seeing then, we'll move on to item seven, planning commission, discussion of future items.
I mentioned this before when Mel and I were just here, but I love these revisions of the zoning ordinance because there's some stuff that hasn't had applied for a long time. This clarifies it. But secondly, we also had a quite a contentious hearing that was ended quickly. We realized we didn't have any authority over mobile home parks along, there's one along the Kings River. But we have some other potential similar situations where people move in things licensed by the state of California that I don't see how they ever get a vehicle license for them because they really aren't movable. But, you know, maybe it's time we look at that, what is defined as a mobile home. Right now, it's anything with a California license. But I think there's one that I've heard about on one ninety-eight going to Three Rivers. I don't know where that is, but can we look into that?
Yes, Commissioner. We do, through the building permitting process, require that these mobile homes are post nineteen eighty-four, I believe it is. So, so they are movable. And as we've experienced more recently with applications for use permits for mobile homes, the requirement is that they do maintain that they are mobile. And our, our use permit requirements are specifically that. And you'll see that in the conditions on a lot of use permits, that we allow mobile home parks versus stationary buildings. So we do have regulations in place. And it's, it's, the devil's in the details as far as enforcement. And they do a lot of enforcement, especially regarding employee housing, where this issue comes up a lot. But if it is the commission's desire, we could discuss this more thoroughly, but.
They just don't seem to be ever moved. They park them in their, people are selling permanent sites.
Bill, as I recall on that one, and it, on the Kings River down there, because those units were less than four hundred square feet, they were considered RV recreational vehicles or something like that. And we didn't have any authority. We couldn't, we couldn't restrict them or anything. The only thing that we could do, though, is make them have a truck available there. So when the Army Corps of Engineer announced a release of a certain amount of water, it was gonna take twenty-four hours for that water to get to that location. And they had to be able to pull those units up out of the, out of the, off the shoreline and get it up on that bluff.
They have those portable, above-ground sewage holding tanks. They're pretty nasty.
We don't have that release problem anymore.
Right. And it, you know, there's a lot of progressive enforcement involved, I believe, with that project. So, and those were put pretty squarely in the conditions as I have looked over the previous projects regarding mobile units. There's no, no clear way to, to do that, as stated. But I think in between building enforcement and our, our use permit conditions, we, and progressive conditions, where they are self-reporting to some level, but also enforcement on our end, we have been able to make sure those aren't such a nuisance or a blight.
I've been to some where those tanks are leaking stuff out, you know, so it's not too pretty. I don't, that's Allison Suckley's area, right?
Yeah, yes, that's in environmental health. That would be on the enforcement side.
There's also, there's a, a project which is evolving in Lemon Cove and it might be good for the planning department to take a look at it. That was a former Lemon Cove campground. It became a tiny house development. And the tiny house is really cool. I know you've all seen the TV show or may have, but it's really an interesting concept. It's gonna be something we're gonna be dealing with in the future. And the tiny houses are actually on trailers, so they can be taken. But what happened is in the Lemon Cove project is that that didn't take off fast enough. There's only two or three in there that are actually building the tiny houses. So they've now reopened as an RV park. So I think you're gonna see this type of thing in the future and it might be good to take a look at the Lemon Cove one and make sure our regulations are up to snuff with what they need for the future.
Yes, Commissioner. We, and that was project, that project is, I'm sure, in the forefront of your mind. The, it's changed the nature of that project. They didn't, not want to move forward with the tiny houses. In fact, they're gonna move forward on a lot split that's actually gonna allow more farming in that area. So, but it is something, you're correct, that we should keep in mind, especially if we're transitioning campgrounds or mobile home allowed uses to our use permit process that if they're gonna actually put homes, that they do have the requisite infrastructure for that. And that's one thing we had in the forefronts of our minds when we were gonna require a use permit in addition to make sure that, one, it's a discretionary decision and, two, that we do have all the environmental review prior to allowing it. But they've since changed their minds and we'll go through an administrative process to continue to, to do what they're doing there now.
I've seen some sewage treatment processing plants. I'm not quite sure what they call it, but instead of bleach fills, they pump it off into drip tubing into, it's treated, you can't drink it, but it's clean enough to put in the, on the surface of the ground, basically, six, eight inches under the ground. Septic systems, they, they are a problem.
Yes, and as you've, the commission's seen, we've, we are moving towards a more aerobic process with these sewage plants that we have done with these latest subdivisions that have been approved through the board and through the commission. So, yes, as part of our water quality analysis, we're looking that, into that more in-depth. But, you know, the mobile home parks are, and campgrounds are gonna continue to have their existing facilities. And if we do move to actually creating residential units in those mobile homes, parks, or campgrounds, we'd be definitely looking at their ability to provide adequate infrastructure.
And with our, with our drought situation being the way it is, it looks like we're gonna be chronically short of water, probably, here in this valley. We need to set up where, a means to where we can at least process and treat that water, not maybe to the point where we can drink it, but at least use it someplace else. Rather than just send it in the dirt and lose it, you know, until, until it migrates clear down to the water table again. So, yeah, so that, you know, we need to take a look at that process, too, and that.
Hey, any other items? Otherwise, we're gonna adjourn and reconvene June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifteen, nine o'clock, same place.
Do we have a very big meeting that, that next meeting?
We would be looking at, as we said today, at least two, two projects. So, question, no. I guess it depends how you define big. But yes, it's not looking like we would have a big meeting.
Are we adjourned?